I've got seven o'clock, so we will start. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the town planner. This is the Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. We will start with a roll call of our commission members. Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
David St. Germain.
Here.
Scott Halston.
Here.
I will note for the record, regular members, Robert Canto and Roja Afshar are absent. Alternates Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Mike Tucci.
Here.
And Kyla Zimmerman? Yeah, all right, hang on. Kyla's in under a attendee rather than last I'll try to move her.
Hi, here.
Hi, there we go. All right. Hi, Lizanne. All right, Mr. Chair, it's all yours. Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Appreciate it. Welcome, everybody, to the October 7th Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. We'll get started with the legal notice, Liz, mind?
Okay. Excuse me. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on Monday, October 7, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following application. Bulwark LLC application for special permit for intensive construction, including blasting and rock crushing associated with approved development of site at 8120 and 8122 Colt Highway, AKA 245 Colt Highway in a C1 zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Monteith Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website. Copy. This proposal is online or available by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 19th day of September 2024, Town Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thanks, Liz. Appreciate it. So we've got a couple of vacant seats tonight that we need to appoint alternates to. So, Kyla, are you willing to serve as a voting member in place of Bob Canto?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mike, are you willing to serve as a voting member in the place of Roja Afshar?
Yep.
All right, great. So our first item on the agenda, Sign Pro at 838, we're going to continue that, Shannon. Is that correct?
Correct, please.
And so we need a motion of second right to continue that to the October 21st.
Please.
Meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the sign application by Sign Pro for property located at 838 Farmington Avenue to the 1021 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye opposed. Motion passes. Great, thank you. On to number two, Hartford Sign and Design LLC sign application for property located at 170 Scott Swamp Road.
Okay, not sure. I sent links to a couple people. Do we have someone online for the Hartford Design? Yeah, there we go. Jerianne, are you going to present the application?
Mute. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, great, thanks. So this, this application consists of a, of a small monument sign, which falls under the, the square footage of, that's allowed by, by the, by the regulations. It is not illuminated. The property owner may do some exterior illumination, but as, as it stands, it's not illuminated. And then the other part of the, the sign application involves putting signs on the, the tenant right above the tenant doors. And the building hasn't been completed yet, so that's why the last page here is, yeah, you're just about there, is, is the, the sign to scale over the doors. I went over there and, you know, they just have the skeleton up at this point. But they're just going to be very simple, not illuminated, pan signs with a, they have a, a black frame around them, and then just final applied lettering, TBD as far as who the tenants actually are. And you can see the map of the property and showing where the sign is going to be situated. And it's, you know, it's very far from the road, which is good. And it's, it's perpendicular. It's, it's going to be small, but I'm sure, you know, it has an, an address number on it, so that might help people find the property. And we've all been watching it being built, so. On our, on our way to jilly beans there, so. So it's, it's a fairly simple, straightforward project.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Let me turn it over to the commissioners for questions. Matt, any questions?
I just want to confirm that the signs above the doors, those are almost all facing the inside of the compound, right? Except for maybe building two?
Well, right, exactly. The only building I'm dealing with here is the first one that you see in the little rendering there, and that's the one that's parallel to the, to the road facing out. So that's the only, only one that we're, we're contracted to do signage for at this point.
Okay.
It's just, it's just building, so on this, it's referred to as building one.
Building one. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Liz?
Um, nope, it's pretty straightforward. You've worked out location of the sign with the whole state and the, what am I, right away and everything, so that's why it's so far back, correct?
Correct.
Okay. No, I have no other questions.
Dave?
Yeah, no questions. Thank you.
Kyla?
No questions, thank you.
And Mike?
No questions.
And Bruce?
No questions.
Yeah, I don't think I have any questions either, so thank you very much for the presentation. Can we get a motion in a second?
Like to make a motion to approve the sign application by Hartford Sign and Design LLC for property located at 170 Scott Swamp Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. We've got one application from Town Farm of Plan, Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission to accept. Can we get a motion in a second for that, please?
Are you all over?
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Going to say you could.
You seem so ready.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by the Town of Farmington Plan and Zoning Commission for text amendment to the zoning regulation revising Article 2, Section 8, RDM subsection C, Development Standards, and Article 4, section, thanks, 8B3, schedule of off-street parking in RDM zone and schedule public hearing with a recommended hearing date of 11/13/2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, everybody. All right, moving on to our public hearings, just some quick sort of guidelines, I guess, or process around the public hearings. We'll have the applicant, we have just one tonight, we'll have the applicant present to the commission. Just like we did, we'll have commissioners ask questions, and then we'll open it up to any public comment. I'm not sure if we have anybody in the room, but if there's anybody online, we'll do room first and then online. And we just ask that you keep comments relatively limited in order to respect everybody, public and the commission's time. So thank you for indulging me in that. And with that said, we'll go straight to our first public hearing, which is Bulwark LLC application for special permit for intensive construction, including blasting and rock crushing at 8120 and 8122 Colt Highway.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dave Ziyaks. I'm a professional engineer and principal with FA Heska Associates, and we're located over in East Granby. And we're the civil engineers for the project, and we're here for the inland wetlands meetings and the special permit and site plan before you folks. And surprisingly, that was in summer of 2023. It's amazing how time goes by on us. But we've been, we've been very active since then, working on finishing up all the details in order to, you know, get the project under construction. With me this evening in the audience is Dave Polley. He's one of the principals. I believe Matt Morris may be on the virtual world, and our blasting contractor, Dave D'Ambrogio, should be up there as well. If the commission has any questions for our blasting contractor. The, Shannon, maybe the next slide, just to refresh people's memory. This is over on Route 6, just west of the Hilton Hotel, Hampton Hotel, I guess it is, and the apartment facility there. It's about 1,000 feet from there. And it actually involves the two lots. One's very small, and the other one's a little bit bigger. It's a total site of 4.99 acres. The staff is assigned the address 245, so we'll be getting rid of that 820 and 822 designations pretty soon. So we'll have an address at 245. But basically, Shannon, next slide, please. This was the site plan that you folks approved. It has a four-story climate-controlled building, which is that tan color, about footprint of about 19,800 square feet. And then with the four floors, it works out to be a little over 79,000 total square feet. And as you can see, it's concentrated over on the east, easterly side of the site. And working back and forth with the Wetlands Commission, like most of the site, 3.5 acre, 5.8 acres, I think of it, is going to go into conservation. So basically, everything literally right outside the footprint of our parking area will be in permanent conservation. So tonight, we're really focusing on that easterly side. Since that approval, we've been working with staff on addressing, you know, the conditions of approval from both the Wetlands Commission and this commission. We've been working with the Connecticut DOT for the curb cut and for the installation of the water main that's necessary. We've been working with the Farmington Valley Health District on getting the leaching, small leaching field we need approved. And we've been working with the Connecticut Water Company on extending the water main. The water main will come from our frontage easterly, about 1,000, a little over 1,000 feet, 1,100 feet, to the frontage where the apartments and the hotel are located. That's where the water main ends right now. So we're going to be going down the northerly shoulder of Route 6 and extending the water main. So that's part of this application as well, in the event that we hit any rock in doing that. So we've been working with the development team, led by Dave and Matt, to bid the project out and come up with a selection of contractors and subcontractors. And we've selected D'Ambrogio Blasting Company, who's done work in Farmington over the years and done a lot of work everywhere else. I've worked with them a few times myself over the years to deal with the, the rock removal on the site. Like we talked about, this is all part of your Section 27, which is very extensive and what the requirements are to prepare an excavation plan. But in this case, we don't have a large quantity of excavation. We have the blasting that we need to do. So that's what trips the Section 27. And as I pointed out in, looking back on my notes from the TPZ meeting and what we've provided for staff on our project description, we have, for overall excavation, we figure we have about 1,600 cubic feet of what I'll call topsoil, but that's going to be a mixture of the trees that are on the site and everything. Then we have soil and overburden cut. The way this, the soil conditions are on the site, there's about two or three feet of overburden sitting on top of trap rock. That's, that's pretty consistent throughout the site. We've done a number of test pits. So we have about 3,200 yards of that overburden material. Then we're going to have about 1,830 yards of actual rock excavation that we have to deal with. And then, then we have about 1,700 yards or so of fill. If you recall, on the site plan, we have a system retains, it's like six-foot-high maximum retaining walls around the outside. Obviously, you have to backfill behind those walls. We've, I've called for rock crushing or screening on site of maybe 1,000 yards. But in talking with Dave today, actually, we're both thinking that through the blasting operations, this trap rock typically comes out at, you know, sizes that are under four inches in size. So we may be able to use most of that just as general fill on the site and behind the walls without actually bringing a crushing equipment on site. For 1,000 or 2,000 yards, it's really not cost efficient to do that. It's, it's a large setup and a large mobilization. So we're hoping to be able to use most of the material that we generate on site, and then we simply have to haul off the rest of it. There's no place else to put it. There will be some, maybe some blasting involved with the water main installation. That, as it turns out, on Long Route 6, about halfway where our water main is being installed, there's a big sag in the road, and there's a, a large culvert underneath there. So chances are, that's all fill. So we may luck out and get through that area without having to do anything. But the other thing, too, is a lot of times on these narrow trenches for, because the water main's only down five, six feet, there's a very good chance we probably won't even blast in that area. We'll probably just chip it out with machinery and, and move along. But I've included it in the plan, too, to make sure that it's part of the, the permit that you would issue. So that's basically where we are. We have some staff, minor staff comments. You know, we prepared a full blasting report, which you should have gotten copies of. There's a couple of suggestions that the staff has made that we'll incorporate in the final plan. You have comments from planning on such things as adding in the estimated number of days of blasting. Typically, these blasting permits only have a 30-day limit on them without an extension, and we plan to be done well within the 30-day time period. Processing again on the site, we may do some. May not now. We're sort of leaning towards probably not going to need any, but that would happen during that 30-day process as well. So we'll, we'll work with staff on designating a site, set aside portion of the site for processing and things on the final site plan. The pre-bast surveys have to be done, all in compliance with your Section 27 and different subsections. We're going to, I've already discussed this with DOT. We have to coordinate between the DOT and it'll be the Farmington Police Department. When the actual blasting takes place, for those few moments, the traffic in both directions on Route 6 will have to cease. So there'll have to be, you know, police officers on either end, and that's going to have to be all coordinated and worked out the proper way, so we'll work on that. And then blasting mats are used, D'Ambrogio uses blasting mats for everything. It take no chances that, you know, some bizarre thing happens and you end up with a rock flying through space. That's not, it's highly, highly frowned upon. So that's, that's where we are. This is not really that big a project, you know, given context of where we are today on projects. It's centralized to that area, really, under the footprint where the building's going to be. And, you know, within that 30-day period, we should be done, we should be done with the, the, the portion of the excavation that's for blasting. And again, any, any material that we generate that we can't use on the site, just, it has to be hauled off. There's no, there's no place to put it on the site. So that's going to be, you know, an ongoing process as we, as we develop the sites. So remember, the building is on slab. There's no basement. So we, basically, what we're doing is, it's, I'll call them knobs, knobs of undulating topography on the site. We need to chop those off, get ourselves to a one-flat elevation for the entire footprint of the building. And then it's really mostly fill around that footprint to where the walls are going to be. So, you know, the, the trick is to get, to get ourselves to our, what we call our pad elevation, so we can build our building. Then after that, it's pretty much straightforward construction, nothing, nothing too major one way or the other. Dave, is Dave online there, Shannon?
Uh, he is.
Yeah, so our blaster's online. If you have any specific questions, I won't plan to be a blaster tonight. I know enough about it to, in generalities, but if you have specific questions regarding the operation, Dave will answer that for you. Or if you have any questions on his, on the plan that they prepared, he can answer that as well.
Right, thanks so much.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate it. Matt, quite any questions?
Sure. Do you, can you provide an estimated number of days of blast, or how many blasts per day? Is there like this gut feeling?
Dave, are you online? Can you answer that?
I'm here, Dave. Yeah, so what we'll do is the site contractor will come in, he'll grub everything up, get everything ready for us, shoot elevations, and then we'll come in and drill for a few days. Then what we'll do is blast all day, so we don't waste the cops' time or anybody else. So we'll have a day that we're going to blast all day, and it might be, you know, four or five blasts, whatever the mats could cover safely. We'll probably bring like 12 mats in, and the mats are 12 by 15. But you have to overlap those to be safe. So every time we blast, it's probably going to be like three to four, three to five blasts a day. Then you'd have a, then you'd have a day off, and then you'd drill again another, another series of holes, and you come back and blast again. But this, like Dave said, it's not, it's not a big job. We have a month to blast this, but you know, probably in a couple weeks' time, we'll be done with this project.
And during the blasting phase, Route 6 will be completely shut down?
Yeah, like Dave said, they're going to have a, they're going to, we have to coordinate with that with the Farmington Police, and the, the traffic will have to be halted in both directions. And when that's halted in both directions, we'll blast. I mean, blasting itself, when we do blast, it, it literally takes a second, you know? But we have to make sure everything's clear, and then resume, traffic will resume after that. We do this a lot on, around the state where we blast quarries next to highways. We do rolling roadblocks on the highways. So it's, it's a common practice.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Matt. Liz?
Um, you asked my traffic question, because I was curious how that was going to. Excuse me. Now, the small leaching field that you're going to have to, that's the one that you're going to have to go across the, the wetlands, potentially?
Yes.
Is that, does anything need to be done to get piping and everything to that area?
No, I think we'll be in good shape doing that, and I'm still, I'm, I'm an optimist. I'm, I'm hoping that I can sneak the system back over on this side after Dave gets through his job. If we can find a good patch of soil in the remaining overburden, I'll move the leaching field over there, and I've discussed that with Farmington Valley Health District. They would, they would be more than happy to entertain that modification, so we get rid of the, you know, the little pump station and this and that, all that.
Right, okay. Okay, I was just curious to see whether it was anything that was going to have to be done through.
Yeah, no, not as far as this application would be, no.
So, okay, thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Liz. Dave?
Uh, yeah, can you actually just clarify, like, the actual number of blasting days there would be? Like, I got, I, I.
Yeah, Dave, maybe clarify that one more time?
Yes.
The actual number of blasting days, you think?
Well, we get a month, we get a month of blasting for the permit, so every, every time you apply for a permit, it's 30 days. All right, so, but we're going to go blasting there. How many blasting days? You know, I see the, I see the job on the print, but I haven't been there in person to see the topography, you know what I mean, like that? So I, I would say probably in a two-week period of time, where Mike would maybe have five blasting days, five to six blasting days.
Okay, and how long is traffic delayed during each blast?
So.
Minutes.
Yeah. Take longer to stop the traffic than that, the actual blast. So the blast, the blast are on site, well, you know, we'll probably have radio control to the, to the police. The police will stop the traffic. When all the vehicular traffic is stopped, and we feel it's safe to push the button, we'll push the button. And after that, we'll make sure everything, the area is clear, and traffic will resume, so maybe five, 10 minutes.
It's usually the restart of the traffic that's the problem.
Yeah. No one wants to wait, no one wants to wait. You know how it is now. Yeah.
Be smart to move ahead, though.
Yeah.
And then, final question is, the survey that's given out, the pre and the post, where does that data go?
Uh, it's, Dave, am I, am I right? Is, is the Fire Marshal's office the final say on permits and take, and, and, and that, and collect, and collection of the data and everything?
So, no, no one collects the data. The data goes back to an office and stays on there, stays on file for seven years. If there's a claim, if there's a claim, then, then, then it gets released to the insurance company. The insurance investigator, adjuster investigator does a investigation, and he uses those pre-bast surveys.
What's the focus of the surveys?
The surveys are for existing conditions. So a lot of people don't know what they have in their house, cracks wise and all that stuff like that, you know, cracks, existing conditions, cracks, paint chips, rock out of place, all sorts. So it's high-resolution video that they go around, and they take that, you know?
Got it. All right, thanks. No more questions.
You're welcome.
Uh, Kyla?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Thanks, Kyla. Mike?
I'm assuming the blasting won't be happening during high commuting time or like when school buses are going?
No, the, the DOT is going to restrict that time. So I, it's probably nine to three or something like that, you know?
Yeah, no further questions.
All right, I'm, I'm only one left, and I realize the answer to this will be highly dependent on approvals and, you know, the scheduling of all the various stakeholders, but when do you think you're planning to do this? What, what timeframe if you had your others?
Ideally, Dave, what, what are we looking at now with, uh, start of construction, ASAP kind of thing? Yeah. Yeah, and the building permit, which the, I mean, the, the actual architectural drawings are drawn. There's a number of outstanding issues still that need to be worked out with the building department, but it's not like we're, we're well along on that. So ideally, if we could do it in, say, like, the month of November or something, that would be great. You know, get the tree, to get the leaves down off the trees. The clearing is a lot easier. And then get this done over the, you know, during the winter times and, and see how the winter progresses. If we have another mild winter, we may start foundations right away. If, if we're in a more true, you know, traditional New England winter, or we got lots of cold weather and snow, it'll probably drag on until the spring. But the blasting, we'd like, we want to, the clearing and the blasting, it's a perfect time of the year to start this, you know, you know, and say within 30 days, 60 days, something like that. Get it done.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thanks, Bruce. Just a couple questions for me. So you had mentioned working with DOT, and that all makes sense. It may be nine to three. Our regs talk about eight to two. So if it ended up being like nine to two, is that still going to work for you guys if they ask you to start a little bit later?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we'll live within, we'll live with whatever timeframes it is. An hour one way or the other isn't going to make a.
Um, and are there any, I mean, we've talked about the road and obviously Route 6. Is there anything else around that's even going to notice this is happening, like neighbors and all of that?
You know, I doubt it. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of residential neighbors, you know, within our zone.
Okay.
Uh, so other than, you know, a whistle going off before the blast goes off and things that maybe of some curiosity, I,
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think it's going to look any different than a regular old construction site.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Thank you.
People across the street.
Anybody else? Any questions before we?
Actually, Scott, I have another one. I'm, I'm thinking of this area. There is a hiking trail that goes like from Rattlesnake Cliff and crosses near, near there. I think it might be a good idea to block that so that there are no hikers walking near your site at the time.
Now, we can work, we could work that into the blasting plan to come up with something on the days that we're going to be blasting, you know? Put up some kind of barricade of some sort or a sign, warning or something like.
Yeah, there's a, the blue-marked Tunksis Trail.
Yeah, that's a comment, but that's over.
Is it, is it?
I think it's further than you think, yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
It's at the top. Everything gets very confused in this area with how far away it is. Like, it seems closer and it's.
Yeah, we can, we'll take a look at that with.
Yeah, it's way up.
A good call out, though, Bruce.
We'll take a, a look at that with staff again and see if it's necessary.
Okay, just, just occurred.
We're, we're with you guys, though. I mean, this is, you know, utmost safety is, is, is the priority here.
I had a comment, Scott.
Sure.
I'm not sure how far along this was, but we approved the, a dog park on the Hampton. Maybe they should get noticed, too, before blasting.
They're going to get noticed, yeah, yeah.
Keep the dogs inside.
Even though we're sort of, in theory, outside the limit of the property, we're, we're kind of dragging the project with the water main down the road, so they're going to be notified. And we notified them as the public hearing notifications, too, even though technically you could argue they're outside the, the limit, but, you know?
Okay, thank you.
I think the dog parks at the Marriott.
Or the Marriott.
Yeah, so I think we're definitely good there.
All right, thanks for that mistake.
Yeah.
Well, we have the apartment, we have the apartment dwellers to, you know, to.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Makes sense.
Even though they're well without, beyond the normal boundary, nonetheless,
Yeah.
why, why mess around?
Anybody else? Questions before we?
And you're going to, you put up big signs, like, is there some sort of visual sign for drivers-by sort of thing? I can't remember. I'm, I'm trying to.
Dave, what kind of signage do they require in the permit?
So you're going to have signs that's coming, coming into the property, when we're working into the property, on both sides of the property, probably. On both sides of the property, probably 50 feet on either side of that driveway, so people know. Um. Just a bit, they just alert that, you know, when you're coming into sight that we are blasting. And then as, as we go down the road, if we're gonna be blasting on the road, then we're gonna have to move it down a couple hundred feet in both ways for the water main.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, commissioners. All right, well, this is a public hearing. If there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak for, in favor or against the application. Please step up to the microphone. Shannon, we have anybody?
Yeah, if anyone's called in online to offer comment on the application for blasting at 245 Colt Highway for the Bulwark application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. You'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Mr. Chair, there's no hands raised.
Okay. Any last questions? Anybody for the applicant before I close it? Okay, we closed the public hearing. Any discussion required? Pretty straightforward? Just checking? Okay. Why don't we get a motion in a, in a second, please?
I would like to make a motion to approve the special permit. By Bulwark LLC for intensive construction, including blasting and rock crushing associated. With approved development of site at 8120 and 8122 Colt Highway, AK 245 Colt Highway, C1 Zone.
Second?
All right, all those in favor? I, opposed. Extentions, motion passes. Thanks, Shannon.
Good luck. Happy blasting.
Happy blasting.
Want to push the button?
Yeah.
I thought the same thing, Dave.
What a fundraiser.
Something wrong with us. All right, Shannon, over to you.
Uh, yes, I had a few. Agenda planners report things, so let me open those. I had left those closed, so I wasn't. Conflicting. Okay. The first one is for a sign application at 1274. 1274 Farmington Avenue. And the. Former, this has had a number depending upon how long you've been in town. I've now been in town long enough. This is the fourth restaurant. I almost feel like, you know, I'm a native at this point. So, uh. Wooden Tap, AK Toro Loco, AK Sugo.
Yep.
Is now gonna be Cafe Pesto. They have, um. Painted over the murals they had done on the end walls of the building.
Yep.
And this is a straight up refacing of the existing sign. Candle with a vinyl graphic. There's no other change. It's a very. Straightforward sign with overhead lights. Um. There's been no, it's the same size, size as it was there for the Sugo. Um. It looks, as I go back through and compare various iterations that perhaps between Toro Loco and Sugo, it's. Increased in size. Nonetheless, it's still well within the size requirements. It's, and again, it, they're not, there's no structural, this won't even require a building permit with our building official because it's just a vinyl application. So if there's no questions, concerns or otherwise, then we're gonna continue to let this move ahead through and let them go ahead. Uh, with no further permitting requirement.
Any, any opening estimate? Have we heard anything?
Uh, I have not. No, that I don't have yet, but I.
Same, same group as?
No, it's a different, so the owner, they, because they purchased, I'm pretty. I'm pretty sure they purchased, so for the Toro Loco Sugo entity purchased the property. This is now gonna be a leased tenant in. Under them, uh, is my understanding is how that's gonna work. Um. From what I've heard, a six, a very successful restaurateur that has, uh, one or two restaurants in other locations that have done well. According to the sign vendor anyhow, he's very excited. So.
Take him at their word.
Yes, okay. So perfect. That'll proceed then without further ado. Um, the next one is CVS in Unionville. Uh, some of the CVS stores have gone through rebranding. Some of them are done already. I was surprised. Uh, our CVS in Unionville hasn't been done yet, so. The old logo for CVS is the CVS slash pharmacy. The new logo is the heart, CVS Pharmacy. And so that's what we're seeing here. So you've got the two photos. Existing in each case, um, existing is on the left, proposed is on the right as we scroll through the photos. So the, uh, sign above the entry door, uh, is gonna get changed out. It's basically the same. In all cases, they're, they're by and large the same size. There's minor nuances with the changes and the dimensioning, but. The goose like, gooseneck lights will stay. Um, so it'll be exterior illuminated for the main sign over the entry door. Here's a close up version of it with the dimensions. The blade signs are getting changed out. You'll notice these are the reverse color. Um, so they are white background, red lettering under existing. They will be red background, white lettering. Under proposed, they are three inches wider. I didn't find that, that the height is the same because the bracket, they're not changing the brackets. They're not changing the illuminations referred to as perimeter only. I'll be honest, I drive by it multiple times. I'm not even aware of the illumination. So there is no change to the illumination on these, so if there is some. Perimeter illumination, then that's what will remain. On how it was approved originally. The sign under the entry, uh, the walkway, that canopy walkway that runs along River's Edge. That hanging down sign will change out. And then some of these, so there's a store hour sign, that's gonna change and get refreshed. This entrance sign on the side of the building where the ramp is. Will get changed out and will be the reverse. And this sign, uh, is erroneous. They were gonna, they, it, it should not have been. I clarified that with the sign vendor this morning. So there's no extra sign. They're all a one for one replacement. Um. It meets from a size area, it all meets. We've, I, I took a look at the numbers and the math. They sent in a leasing plan for me because I wanted to check. Some of the math. Uh, which is this, here is the leasing plan added in, so. Um, I, because this is in Unionville Center, Unionville Village Zone. I forwarded this over to Tim Eagles, Chair of the Architectural Design Review Committee. He agreed with me. It's a one, basically a one for one replacement, did not feel it was necessary for this to go through the entire committee. Uh, for a review. Everything was an equal one for one. Virtually no change in size, no, nothing meaningful, uh, and no change to illumination. So if we're all good, that'll continue to building permit. Yes.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Fabulous. Building permit. Great. All right, our last one is gonna be a little bit of an interesting conversation that just came up this afternoon for me. Um. There's a little story with this, so bear with me for a minute.
That's a big story.
And, uh, well, there's, there's a little story that Shannon's gonna share with this, um, and then we can come back around to. Um. How this ties into Polo Grounds. So Tungus Mead. Has a number of soccer fields. Why can't I drive? Can't drive and talk at the same time? Sure, there's a joke in there somewhere. Um. Okay. So again, number of soccer fields. Tungus Mead, we've got field, what is referred to as Field One or the Al, Al Bell Field. Uh, at Tungus Mead, um. Has seen a higher than usual demand rate and as such. The field, uh, they had, and I think because we've had such a severe drought conditions. And I say severe, it's not like it's been extended long term that the town's in a severe drought, but. The lack of rain over the last eight to 10 weeks has been notable. And with the increased demand at the field, the field has suffered, so they have had to close this field. So now the high school games are being played on the turf field. So these are the only two fields that have lights on them. With the high school games shifting to the turf fields. Um, other teams, some recreation teams, some are club teams that we rent the fields to. Have now been, um, displaced or given the alternative of. Taking a later time slot after the highs, because high school gets priority. So they're now at a later time slot. Which is now what we have our younger. Athletes. Playing later in the evening, getting home later in the evening. It's a school night, et cetera. So. They, uh, I was approached by a representative at the Polo Grounds today. About allowing. Soccer practices twice a week at the polo fields. From six to eight 30 in the evening. Which. I don't believe is going to fall in line with our. Permit, our special permit requirement. Um, that we have with the Polo Grounds. So. As we look at this, they, they are allowed to have non-polo events. Um. This is what's up on the screen is the permit that the Polo Grounds has and the conditions of approval that they're operating under. Um. I initially was thinking, oh, you know, I'm sure we can try to get this to work. And the more I read through this and like, I don't, I don't think we can get this to work, not well. Um. At number three says there could be weekday events, Monday through Thursday, less than 200, that can operate until dusk. Um, with the PA, so it won't be a PA system. It'll be just coaches with, you know, the usual. Everybody, most people have been to a soccer event, so it's usually, you know, it's, it's standard. Just coaches and kids. Um, the issue is until dusk. We've got sunset at 6:30 and they're gonna go till at least eight and probably won't clear out completely until 8:30. Um, the other item was 13 weekday activity on the property that does not go past dusk and does not involve amplification. Does not count towards the total number of events permitted. You'll recall this, this permit allows no more than 12. Um, major events. Um. So with these going. Past dusk. I don't see how I, we can look at this and not count it. And that just a number 11 is there should be no lighting used. Uh, that'll impact the neighbors and they clearly, they're gonna have to have lights they were gonna bring in. They already have light stanchions for their own events. They were gonna bring in a couple of more. For the soccer. Um. So I'm not. Looking at this, I'm not thinking this is going to work. We have. I have since chatted with our Director of Public Works. There he and, um. Our Superintendent of Recreation. Are gonna look to see if there are other fields that can be used. Um, than the condition of the other fields, because there's other soccer fields tucked in around and throughout. There's a field or I think two fields here. There's a couple of fields here.
Yep.
Um. And let's see if. Uh, lights, but temporary lights could be put on one of those fields, which I think is a better.
Absolutely.
For us. Um, so that's unless somebody has a different opinion or is seeing something, but I'm thinking. Those neighbors, um. Contend with a lot. I, I admittedly, they're across from Polo Grounds. There's pluses and minuses to that, but I think. Um, you know, unless we're going to, unless the polo. Facility is willing to have that count against their event count. I don't think we can. Just let that fall under a permitted as of right, uh, given that it's going to go past. Past dusk. Uh, and require lighting in order to accommodate it. Again, I'm getting head nods and agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think Shannon, just, just to add to it, given the conversations we had, was it a couple of years ago now? About the Polo Grounds between, I wouldn't tinker with that agreement at all, like.
Yeah.
It needs to be read as it's written that and what, like he said, what the neighbors are. Uh, dealing with, I don't know what the right phrase is there, I think. Your, your second solution there of can we get some temporary lights up at Tungus Mead makes a lot more sense.
I, I agree completely. I don't, as you say, if we open that can of worms. And try and, I appreciate their. Asking and trying, offering help.
Well, and I appreciate their willingness to try to help out the community, which is, there's a, there's a, a need and they're trying to help. I just unfortunately. Um. I just, I don't think they're buffered enough in order for that to be.
Yeah.
A successful solution. It's, it's only for four weeks. And it's, yes, it's only till eight or eight 30, I, I don't know, would like everybody clear out, but. I'm really hard pressed on that one.
Agreed.
Agreed.
I imagine this would continue to be a problem going forward though, next year and the.
Um, I'm not sure what they're looking at, uh, Matt, as a long-term solution for Field One. So really that this happened because it was a domino effect. The high school got pushed off of Field One. They get precedence then on the turf field, uh, and so. Anybody that had been scheduled on the turf field now. Either has been relocated at another school field or got pushed to later in the evening. And the issue is the push to later in the evening, giving the age range of the athletes involved. For those, they're nine to 12 year olds. Um, and so they're not even starting until like seven o'clock in the evening and finishing.
Yeah.
Eight 39, some nine 30, depending upon the sequencing. Uh, because it's just the one field, but there were multiple teams impacted. So, um.
And my understanding is that Field One got used more. I could be wrong, but got used more. By travel and wreck. This late summer and fall and may have contributed to some of the condition too. I could be wrong about that, Shannon, but that's my impression.
I, I'll be honest, I'm not sure on the details, other than I think the use of the field. Uh, had an increased intensity coupled with now.
Right.
A late season.
Yep.
Drought-ish conditions.
Sure.
Um, has kind of combined to make a less than ideal scenario for the field conditions. That they've determined the field needs to rest. For a couple of weeks that it's not suitable for the high school play. At the caliber they're used to, to playing, um, so they've had to shift. And then it, like, it created this domino. So. Yes. Okay, no, loud and clear. Thank you. I appreciate the sounding board in this particular case, so.
Um, I just, uh, Kyla here, I just have a couple of questions because I, I wasn't a part of the original agreement. Um, that. That kind of took part. And, uh, my daughter's not in soccer, but. Uh, I have a lot of friends where their children are in travel and they, so I go to a lot of soccer games. And it, it seems like. A really big part of the community in Farmington and. Uh, um, it seems like there's. You know, it's really good for the mental health too of, of the kids that are playing. Um. And, you know, being a mom, I know getting your kids home at a decent time. Um. Leaves a, a, a big impact. I just don't know, you know, how. How the agreement got so stringent to where like, I don't think soccer's very loud. I, I mean, I know my brothers, when they played, they stomped their feet and they were hoping for thunder when it was raining because they still had to play in the rain. Um. But, you know, just to have some minimal lighting, I, I just don't know, what, what would that take to go back? To this agreement. Um, and open it up for a rediscussion, because it, it sounds like maybe that. Whole thing got really heated. So there, there's. It seems like there's not like a lot of room to maybe open that up. I, I, that's just kind of what I'm taking from what I'm hearing here. Um. So, you know, what would that take to open this up? Because I feel like that's a really good thing for the community. It would be a really good thing. Um, I think soccer's a really big deal. I think it helps, you know, mental health is a, a big issue. Amongst, um, kids, especially after COVID. And I think soccer is, is a really. Good thing to advocate for as a town. Um. I don't know if I asked it an actual question, but. Just kind of wondering how, how, like, how do you open that back up? Or it's, it kind of seems like that's not a direction we would even want to go in.
Want me to take that one, Mr. Chair?
Sure, so. Where to start with it? I, in, in my opinion, I'm always speaking for myself here. I don't think we're. We're saying that soccer's not important and the, the opportunity for the kids, it's just the wear right now, I think is the, the question and. And, and I'll go back, I was on the commission during some of the hearings associated with the, the Polo Grounds. Um, and the reason it's so stringent is because the Polo Grounds weren't particularly amenable to. Working with us to create something that was less stringent, so. In my opinion, it's hard to go back and open it up as a gigantic can of worms based on the conversations that we had a couple of years ago. I, I still think in my, again, in my opinion, that. Just trying to get some lights at Tungus Mead that allows us to go, not, not at the late times that we, I've been talking about because of. Field One, but it's gonna start getting, it's already getting dark at like six o'clock, but just so that they can have. Practices a little bit later, um, due to the time of year. I still think that's the, in my opinion, again, that's the best solution.
Correct. Yeah, so this is, and right now, this is just a temporary i- i- issue because of the condition of Field One, so this isn't. None of this was being conceived as a permanent solution, um. But even with that, based on the conditions from the twenty seventeen approval, which is what's in effect for the Polo Grounds. It doesn't comply. Uh, they did try and, I believe it was twenty-two. To revamp the conditions. It was unsuccessful. It is not, they have a, uh, permit in place. It would be, uh, the Polo Grounds, if they desired to modify their permit. They would have to come in for modification. So it's simply incumbent on myself as the representative to ensure that the conditions are being adhered to. Um, uh, so that's, yeah, th- this is just trying to figure out a, a temporary solution for a four-week issue. Um, quite honestly, the Polo Grounds aren't available on a regular basis. It's just polo season's finished. So polo season ended in September, so the fields are available, so that's not a permanent solution anyhow. It worked in this particular case because polo's finished for the season.
Okay, that, yeah, that, that clarifies it. Um, I was just, I was just kind of curious.
Sure.
Appreciate the questions, Kyla.
Uh, I don't have anything else. That, that concludes Shannon's planners report for items for the evening, unless somebody has a question for me.
I do have a question.
Say Bruce, I saw the glasses come off.
I know.
I have a question.
He's ready. Yeah. The body language. Go for it. What do you got?
The, um, the gas station at Five Corners is probably the project I think probably we get asked about most, so.
Yes.
Just if there's an update on what's going on there.
There is. They had a, uh. So, yes, they have a demo permit in place, uh, sorry, they have a demo permit application in. It got stalled because there was a discrepancy in a tax payment. Because it, it also includes, uh, our sewer taxes. And they had paid, um, their New Britain Water Tax. And the New Britain Water Tax says water and sewer. They didn't realize there was a separate sewer. They're actually. It's New Britain Water Farmington Sewer. They did not realize they had a separate sewer tax bill they had to pay.
Interesting.
So, uh, that has to clear that, so they've paid it. It has to clear. There's a whatever X number of days in order for it to clear. And then it will process through, so they, uh, they do have a demo permit. Progressing, um, it is not, they don't have it in hand yet, but it is progressing. And it has not hit my inbox yet, cuz it's, I think it's a ten or fifteen day clear, business day clear. So we finally got to the root of that, got that straightened out. Um, I believe they intend to have the building taken down by the end of the year. So the building, the canopy, et cetera, will be down by the end of the year. So, um, and I'm not sure where they stand with DOT. Uh, so they, they're gonna need their DOT approval before they can come in for a building permit and go vertical. But there is, there is progress. They have not gone radio silent on us.
Okay.
That's good, yeah.
Cool. Glasses back on, I'm done.
Okay, I have a question.
Sure.
Midpoint development.
Yes.
Things that, there's things have been, property has been sold and.
Yes.
So, it's, that's, that's it, just that.
The extent of your.
Okay, it's just things have been sold and that's that.
Well, and only part, only portion.
Right.
So only the portion that had been owned by Jeff Scott, uh, sold. The portion that had been owned by Abe Code has not.
Okay.
So, um, so that's, that's where that stands at the moment. They've made a handful of inquiries. We, we knew they were doing due diligence. The, the entity that ended up purchasing it, we knew they were doing due diligence. They had come in and spoken with us. We were very clear about the approval that's in place. Um, we are very clear about the requirements of the zone and the intent. And that deviation of the approval will be minimally acceptable.
Okay. And where's, in the timeline? I mean, is there, is there, I, I've forgotten, they, it, there is no timeline on.
No, so I, as far as, um, permits expiring is, uh, so. No, cuz with code, cuz that was all in the COVID, so it got caught, so it.
Yes.
I think it's fourteen years and there's a five-year extension.
Okay. Nothing's happening anytime soon.
Well, no, it's not, it's just the permit, the permit is valid for that length of time, um. The zone is changed, so it would be just the, the special permit and site plan, um. And the wetlands runs with that, so the wetlands, it all runs concurrently. They, they changed some of the wording, so they all run concurrently. They all have the same timeframe, so, yeah, we've got quite a ways to go before it's on anybody's radar of concern. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
I have a comment.
Sure.
Circling back for the, uh, soccer issue. I just Googled the Farmington Sports Arena. That's always an option to, if field rentals, if the. Mobile lights fall through.
Sure, yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what their availability is, my guess is they're.
It's not that expensive for Monday.
No, it's not. I don't think it's the expense. I think it's the availability. My guess is they're.
Yeah.
Through Friday, probably.
It's a good idea, though, Mike.
And, uh, one more question, twenty Scott Swamp, is there anything on that? Any news on?
Uh, we've had some inquiries. I am expecting an application. But, um, yeah, until the application comes forth, it's not. It's not public knowledge, so we don't, we don't divulge these things until, and I don't believe that property is transferred. So, but there, there is, there has been some interest. Um, I am expecting an application, but, um. Yeah, I'm not exactly sure on the timing.
I just drive by it, I, and I noticed a tree was down, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Sure. Oh, a tree finally came down over there, okay.
In the front yard over there.
Okay, got it.
Not expecting anything, but, like, I wonder what's going on over there.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Anybody else?
All right.
I'm gonna get done inside an hour, that's what it is.
Well, that's, we're gonna.
Just barely.
A much, uh, much, I think, a longer evening on the.
Uh, I believe that would be the case, yeah.
But we've got three hearings, but none of them, I don't, I don't think are overly concerned.
Chinks. All right.
All right.
We, we gotta approve the minutes. Can we get a motion a second, please, for the September twenty-third meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four Town Planning Zoning Commission Meeting. Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I opposed. Meeting is adjourned.